Stand for the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mark to pace.
Here.
Amanda Grubler.
Here.
Kirsten Gustafson.
Here.
Willette Jones.
Here.
Calvin Lewis.
Here.
Matthew McRer.
Here.
Lakeia Walker.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add a first executive session for the purposes of discussing a particular person's employment history. Before we approve the agenda. Second, all in favor? And then make a motion to accept the agenda with that one change.
Sorry, is this, I don't think my mic's on. Hello, hello, okay. For those following, we just added an early executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons. And now we're accepting the agenda with that change. All in favor?
Okay, presentations. Deanna James.
Ms. James Hughes.
Ms. Hughes? Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent Dr. Penniman, teachers, staff, community, parents, students, both virtual and in person. I just first wanted to start off by thanking you for allowing me time with you tonight. My name is Deanna James Hughes. I'm the newly appointed director of student services for Hudson City School District. This evening, I'm going to be sharing with you the New York State Department of Education Suspension Review Analysis. This analysis, although it is coded for the 2024-2025 school year, it uses the 2023-2024 school data. And although new to the district, I'm going to be interpreting the data as such. And I also am happy to share and give credence also to my predecessor, Ms. Kim Leibert, in continuing the work. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge our six keys for school improvement that always layers our practice. Our objectives for this presentation, this presentation will share the purpose of NICE Ed's SEQA team. Now, SEQA, broken down, is the Special Education Quality Assurance Team. So it's a division under NICE Ed that is commissioned to look at suspension data as it pertains to students with disabilities. So I'm going to, excuse the typo, I'm going to provide an overview for you regarding SEQA's evaluation process to familiarize you with that. I'm also going to share with you key findings and recommendations. I'm going to present a plan to address areas of development that we can use to strengthen our current procedures and practices in service for all students. And I'm going to emphasize for all students, because although SEQA is specific to students with disabilities, the data is applicable to both general ed and students with disabilities in terms of practice. And also, when SEQA does these reviews, they review under general education provisions firstly, before proceeding with the students with disability provisions, which will be explained in its entirety. So, the SEQA Suspension Review Purpose, it is quite a healthy bit, but I've broken it down for you tonight. So, when we talk about the SEQA Suspension Review, what are the essential things that we need to know? What's the context, right? Because it may not, it may or may not be familiar with you. And basically, the SEQA Suspension Review is an official evaluation. It's commissioned by NICE Ed's SEQA team. And what they do is they look at districts' policies, procedures, and practices. School districts are notified by NICE Ed whether or not they qualify for a suspension review by the regional SEQA office. And the way they do that is by looking at if there are one or more years of data that show that there's a significant discrepancy in suspension of students with disabilities. Why are they doing that? Well, results from the review provide district staff a better understanding of the regulations so that they may develop improvement strategies. So it's not an "I gotcha," it's a "how can I help you," right? So we have this extra level of support to help us move forward. Now, there's different buckets that they look in terms of their evaluations. One is disproportionality in terms of long-term suspensions of students with disabilities versus their general education-only or neurotypical peers. There's another category that they look at, which is disparities by race or ethnicity. And this is inclusive of all races, right? So it's not specific to any one race, it's just do they notice any disparities? And lastly, they look at other indicators of disproportionality in discipline that affect students with disabilities. Now, you may be wondering, well, how did we get here, right? There was a historical shift statewide in 2023. And what happened is in 2023, the federal government issued a series of regulations. And they said, "These are things that we want to put in place." And they handed over to our state of New York. And multiple districts simultaneously had to catch up with the plans that were already put in place on the federal level. So I want you to bear in mind that what we're looking at is fairly new statewide. And it's something that a lot of districts are working towards in order to move their districts forward. To give you a little bit better understanding concretely in terms of the review, here's the review at a glance. The review examines district discipline policies and procedures, implementation practices in terms of the rate of daily policy adherence. So we, you know, they look at policies as a whole, but then they all, on the macro level. But then they also look at, how does, what does this look like on a day-to-day basis? They also look at use of positive behavior supports in lieu of suspensions. And in terms of their purpose and goals, they spread them out in these three areas. They are looking at non-compliance, whether it be systemic on a large broad base or child-specific on an individual basis. They also provide technical support to help districts design corrective action. Because again, this is something that is new as of 2023. There are also, their other purpose is to reduce long-term suspensions and discipline disparities among students with disabilities. Because we want our children to be here, right? We want them to be here with us. We know that positive outcomes come about when they're more with us than not. So looking at historically marginalized groups and putting all of that together. Now, possible outcomes of a review and support. NICE Ed offers training resources. I'm happy to report that the SEQA team, over these last two months, have developed very positive relationships with them. And they are very open and supportive in saying, you know, if you would like us, if the community would like us to come, we are more than welcome, we are more than happy to come and sit with you, plan professional development. Anything you need, we're just a phone call away. Which is beautiful, because they're evaluating us based on federal criteria, right? But they also know, they have keen expertise as to how to get to where we want to be. So we're very blessed to have that support in them. They follow up on reviews for long-term improvement and sustainability. So this isn't the group that says, you know, "Hey, guys, I really need you to work on this. Here are the things, here are the rubrics, good luck." They're in here for the long haul, and their support means a lot. Now, the district may also receive findings in some cases that require corrective and/or voluntary compliance plans. So when they say corrective, that would be more like an initiative is made outside of, you know, the district. Like this is, this is the plan in detail. We're not in that space at this moment. But they are willing to assist us in creating what Hudson needs with us, should we require the support. And lastly, they help districts prevent non-compliance. So thinking about, you know, possible issues that may come up with keeping in regard to both civil rights and federal education law, right, to remain in compliance. What does the review process look like with the SEQA team? Again, I am happy to report that this work didn't just start this year. Hudson City School District has been working from the beginning phase of this new transitional period for the state. It began in October of 2023, where SEQA met with administrators. Then they, on 10 days later, they met with student services and counseling staff, moved into junior high school administrators, then high school administrators, then an administrators team meeting, then student services counseling staff. They met, I was able to meet with them for the all-day audit, which was wonderful. Because as someone who is new to the community, I was able to ask the questions, review the data with the experts, and see the areas in which we've grown and the areas in which we're emerging. And then they also met for a debrief, again echoing this support. They didn't just drop the information and hand over a rubric and a scale score. And so they were available to interpret and ask further questions. So, you know, Hudson was identified from the initial phase of this transition. But Hudson has also been working very diligently. And when I say Hudson, I'm giving credence to administrators, teachers, you know, our community has been really striving to do what we need to do. Review methods, again, excuse the typo. This was the 2023-2024 school data for the review that was conducted for this school year. So again, to echo, this school year's review was based on data from 2023-2024. That all-day review took place on April 25th of this year. And there were several different data sources that were reviewed. You get a checklist of things that they're looking for. Quite a few, quite a few pieces of information were pulled. Suspension compliance review, student sample charts, e-school data, disciplinary change in placement worksheets, individual student records, suspension letters, individualized education plans, manifestation determination forms, and BIPs where applicable, right? So the majority of these things that you see via bullet point were for every single student that were pulled for the purposes of this report. The only change that could be is, you know, if a student did not have a BIP at that time. But basically, you pulled all those pieces of information, there was a lot of analysis, there was a lot of discussion. And from that, they were able to complete their review with authenticity. Key findings and recommendations. So I wanted to put a side-by-side analysis, because we are in year two of the review. The first review began in the 2022-2023 school year. The reviews, the folks who are doing the reviews have a rubric over several different pieces that they're looking, that are coded, that have a description. And they, and we're rated against those things. In 2022-2023, again, it goes by the data from the previous year. They were looking at data from 2021-2022. And two areas were pinpointed for improvement. One is Section 201.4A. And that section pertains to the manifestation review. So a manifestation review, just for clarity, is when a student is approaching 10 days or more suspensions in a school year. And you're looking to assess whether are the suspensions due? Are they linked to their disability? Is there things that we can do to assist them in their learning process that we may have missed? Or does a student require more services that are independent of their disability, right? Anything from, you know, maybe they're really working, going through a hard trial right now. And so maybe they need a wraparound service that would assist them in showing up in the manner in which we would like them to show up, but they're experiencing difficulty in doing so. So a manifestation review is when you do have a conversation around the table with a team, with a parent, sometimes with the students, if parents or guardians are okay with that. And we have a discussion, much like the review with SEQA, we look over different documents. And there's different pieces that we look at to determine that. So Section 201.4A looks at that. And it's trying to discern, what does that relationship of their disability and behavior look like in terms of the result, right? So you're taking all those things together, and then you're putting that against what was the actual discipline measure given, right? And so if you find that the conduct, so the behavior, right? If you find that the behavior is a manifestation of the disability, right? And then, or not, you know, so that's what they're looking at. But if, if there's a timeliness that's required with that, it has to be done no later than those 10 school days. And those 10 school days can be actualized either cumulatively, one after the other, or throughout the school year, right? And so that's what they're looking at. Now, 201.10D is more or less, more talking about, now that a disciplinary action was taken, how do we provide for the student's educational needs during that time period, right? So what does that look like? What is their tutoring look like? How are they still achieving success as a student, right? So that looks at that in several different lenses, one of them being placement in terms of like the hours that they're provided during the week, that they're guaranteed, their goals, right? Because even though that they may be suspended, they still have goals as a student, all right? They still are students with students with disabilities, that does not stop. And we're still providing for them throughout the entire process. Sometimes that, you know, and now, you know, if there is a disparity, looking, we're examining with expertise the functional behavior assessment, that's a piece that becomes prior to a behavior intervention plan. So that's that piece as well. So again, this has to do with placements, and what does that look like once a determination has been made? Now, that was the previous year. This year, Section 201.10D was also found as an area for growth, as was 201.4A. And the initial, and the additional piece that was noticed as well had to do with the parental notification, right? So when you're sitting, when you're having those disciplinary meetings, no later than the date in which the decision was made for a change of placement, the parent has to receive the notification. So the day a decision is made, on that day of that meeting, the parent needs to know about it, right? And that has to be, and their procedural safeguards have to be provided in tandem with that in accordance to Section 200.59F.
Can I ask a quick question?
I was just gonna say, I need to pause.
I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So these are the areas that were flagged for like in need of improvement based on the report.
That is correct.
And so if we read this correctly, we like didn't successfully sort of close the gap on 201.10 and 201.4 between the first time we were reviewed and the second time, because those are flagged still as needs of improvement. And then there was one additional area. Just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct. And in my talks with the SEQA team, you know, I had the same question as you. And they also conveyed, you know, this is, this is a transitional phase. We do notice that Hudson City School District is using the DCIP process, right? This new transitional process. We, we notice that even though we're using the process, there's areas in which we could strengthen them, right? But that, in terms of what is the plan of action, is going to come next. So I just wanted to relay that, but yes, that is correct to answer your question. Okay, so findings. I love to learn, I'm a lifelong learner, and I love to be in community with people. So being with the SEQA team, as I said, really allowed me to go in, learn, and ask the questions, right? Because although they're here to support us, we want to develop our ability to do what we need to do homegrown, right? So I knew that if I didn't attend, the possibility of us getting a paper handed to us with no real tangible understanding was high, right? And so I took advantage of it. And so just as we're going through, we were going through the data per student, questions were coming off in my head, they were very amenable in answering the questions. So from that, I was able to gather some more information, which was critical, again, being new to the district. Hudson has been actively involved in the historical shift since 2023. Hudson is also actively working with SEQA's recommendation. SEQA has, again, said that they want to continue in a partnership framework. And in order for this to have lasting success, it requires a collaborative effort, right? And when I mean collaborative, I mean it's going to require district leadership, building leadership, SEQA leadership. And the folks who are on the ground are teachers, right? We want what's best for both our staff and our students. So moving forward, that is the formula. And also, I just wanted to, again, give light to that New York State is transitioning with the federal guidelines. So our next step, our intuitive step, our only step, is our plan of action. I have been diligently working on a action plan. And although I don't have it in the entirety shared with you today, because I'm on limited time, there are, I wanted to share with you the different subtopics that are included. Key understandings, laws, guideposts, discipline, due process, IEP behavioral protocols, professional development, student geared supports, monitoring and accountability, community and family engagement. This action plan is not the plan. This is just a plan to have further discussion with the folks that I mentioned before, right? Our building leadership, our administration leadership, and then, you know, with our staff as well. In anticipation, because we are also involved in other groups within New York State, right? That I'm going to get into in a little bit, that is going to be asking for a plan. So this is kind of, I don't want to be cliche, jumping the cart before the horse, all right? But it's just basically having, having things together for when the moment arrives, right? And so this would be a multi-phased action plan, requiring a lot of different things. But these are the pieces that will yield success in my estimation. So I just wanted to summarize and give some recommendations. So I just wanted to summarize and give some recommendations, right? So the compliance assurance plan for the entire district, again, this team is designed specifically for students with disabilities. But this work will have a positive impact on both our students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And it will, I know it will so, because the evaluative piece comes from Part 100 and EdLaw 3214. And those things are protections that are granted under general education requirements firstly. So before SEQA even delves into students with disabilities, they evaluate on this level first. Part 200 is in regards to the CSE process. And Part 201 is in regards to students with disabilities and discipline. And these are additional measures of protections for students with disabilities. Now, the goal is to not enter into corrective action. The goal is for Hudson to meet with its stakeholders, to develop a plan that is specific for Hudson and Hudson's needs, alright? And this is especially urgent, because as Ms. Sorry, Grubler pointed out, correct me if I'm not saying your name right. Grubler, thank you for that. This is something that has been cited for two years in a row, right? So we don't want to continue down this road. Recommendations. Again, this action plan was analyzed and triangulated, a lot of data. And I'm recommending that we look at it to see what reviews may be needed, what modifications may be needed, to create a plan specific to Hudson. And this is in anticipation of NICE Ed's Pathway to Change. It's a big title, it just means an action plan. They're going to be looking for an action plan. Always keeping with compliance, with federal law, with all parties, growing positive outcomes. Now, there's several groups that are already in motion, that will continue in motion. Some of the folks here today are familiar with them. Targeted Skills Group, that's the TSG Group. The Compliance Review and CCEIS, Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. These are all groups with very specific measures and things that they're looking at. And they all have something to do with the information in regards to the suspension review, alright? So these are opportunities, additional opportunities, that are going to be very helpful in terms of putting together an action plan. I wanted to ground us and bring it all together, right? What is the real deal? What is this all about? So our mission statement. We are in partnership with our community to advance the intellectual, social, and emotional development of all students to prepare them for college, career, and citizenship. So this is just another vehicle in getting better at getting better, right? We, the secret sauce is here, right? We're just, we're just going to come together to make it even better. And I'd like to yield for questions. Yes?
I had a question about the sample size and it being 20 students. And I'm curious how that sample size is distributed throughout buildings? And what the total number of students, like? I know you said there were, like, the SEQA review services, both general education and students with disabilities. But I'm assuming, and I think I'm understanding, that it focuses more on the students with disabilities.
So you said a few things?
Yeah, sorry.
And if I leave any of them out, let me know.
Yes.
But I'm going to start from the top. So the number of 20 is set by SEQA. They give a cover sheet, and in their cover sheet, they say, you know, hello, Hudson City School District, we are going to be having communication with you prior to our meeting in person, can you get these things together, right? And so with that, the 20 is indicated as the number that they're looking for. Now, SEQA is specific to students with disabilities, right? So all 20 students were students with disabilities. The way the students were selected were in terms of the number of suspensions per year. So we started with the student who had the most and worked our way down until we reached our 20. It would so happen that within that 20, the 20 represented all three buildings. That's not to say that it would be like that in the year prior review. It's not to say it's like that in all schools, but that's just the way, all school districts, but that's just the way it panned out in terms of our review. Did I miss anything?
No, I have another question.
Okay.
Am I correct to assume that the compliance assurance plans and the policy that the state had with those plans was set prior to SEQA? And it's SEQA that's now, I guess, monitoring those policies more closely? Am I correct to assume that?
So the state likes to give a lot of names for a lot of things. The compliance assurance plan is just another name for this review, right? So when you see and read compliance assurance plan, it's this review that is conducted by SEQA. SEQA is the group that does, that is in charge of that evaluative process, right? So there's multiple divisions within New York State, because we're huge. You know, we call for a lot more students comparatively with other students. So this is just one of the branches. I'm getting back, I feel like there was another piece. You asked about the transitional phase, right? Was that part of your question?
No, sort of, I guess the, sorry, but uh...
It'll come to you, don't, no pressure.
Sorry, I'm gonna...
I'm here, I'm not going anywhere, unless you need me to be.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I thought of it. So the compliance assurance plan that SEQA provided and then reviewed, I'm assuming is based off of New York State policy that was in place before then.
So they're following, SEQA is following a rubric that is given to them by the state, right? So then, when they meet with us, there's several sections, and they go down each section for every student. And then based on that, you know, number, the cumulative number, or what have you, they know, they evaluate as to whether we've met the threshold or did not meet the threshold.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
When does the state, it's every two years they're doing a review?
Well, according to the state, it was every year. So I think the confusion is that if you have a review, it's based on the data from the year before. So we didn't have a review and then two years later had another review? It's, again, I'm sorry for the confusion. But on the slides, I labeled it that way, because when you get the report back, like this year's report, it says 24, 25 report, but it's using the data from the year prior.
Okay, so they're always lagging in their feedback, so our ability to respond is always going to be lagging in some sense, right? Is that...
I wouldn't say, no, I wouldn't...
I guess the date that's on here is April 25.
So...
We're just now getting feedback from what they saw in data from the previous school year.
I can't speak to their structures in place, but I can surmise to guess that, you know, we haven't finished out our school year. So let's say, you know, let's say we met in April, but we met for our data for this year. We wouldn't have a complete snapshot of what May and June look like. So that would be, you know, something that I would put out there. But in terms of their structures, that's something that I would have to address with the SEQA team. And, you know, I'm happy to ask that.
Well, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure that's what I'm getting at. If in April of 25, they reviewed 23, 24 data, would their next review be next April?
I can confirm that, but it sounds intuitively so.
I'm just curious when the, when we would see results, I guess.
Yeah, that's a question that I would have to ask them directly, because I don't work within their department. Any other questions?
How do you see SEQA's focus on students with disabilities impacting suspension and, I guess, suspension and other district policies for the general population of students?
I think I need some clarification on your question.
That's fine.
So you're saying, how do I see SEQA's role in terms of their impact on general education students?
Yeah, I mean, in the slideshow, you mentioned how this has impacts on both the general population and students with disabilities.
So I'm going to start with a metaphor, because I think I got you. Alright, I don't mean to call you off, I just don't want to lose plot. So my metaphor is this, right? Say you have a parent or a guardian, someone important in your life, who is setting the example for one child in the household, right? And there's multiple children in the household. That modeling will have an effect on the other children in the household, right? And so there's that part of it. The other part of it is that even though they're commissioned by the state to look at students with disabilities, they are also evaluating on policies that have to do, that interact with general education students. And suspension is not specific to students with disabilities, right? As a student, you can get suspended, whether you have an IEP or you don't, right? So if SEQA is looking at policies and procedures, and looking at data, and devising structures, and, you know, thinking about, and I don't want to put this on SEQA only, right? Because they're not the only ones who are thinking about things, right? We're, as a community here, thinking about things too, right? There's plenty of folks here and who are at home, right? You can't be an educator and not think about your day, and not think about your students. It never ends. I used to think about my students literally while I was sleeping, right? And so you're constantly thinking about, how do I make, how do I make a better day? What did I do? What did I, what did I not do, right? And so, yes, this is their title, this is what they're doing. They are experts at the rubric and noticing things. But then it also comes back to us, right? So they're, they're just giving a light lift, but we're doing the heavy lifting. So they're saying, this is what I'm lifting, this is what I'm sharing with you. And then we do the analysis, because the last thing we want to do is just deliver a carbon copy, not specific program, hurry up and memorize this and get to work. That doesn't work, right? We want something specific to us, our needs, our students, and that requires a hard look at all of the things, right? And so although this is not a subject where we're like, you know, your initial, and I don't want to speak for you, but I'll speak for myself. You know, initially, it's like, ooh, this is tough stuff, I don't want to, I don't want to talk about this. But it's an opportunity, right? So even though it may not, it may not be, you know, the things that we're happiest to discuss, it's an opportunity that is going to yield positive results in our classrooms, in our hallways, in the way we feel, in the way we're able to do our work, in the way our students are able to learn and grow, in the way we're able to learn and grow as adults, right? So it's all the things, right? So this isn't just a SEQA thing, right? This is also us taking advantage of the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? So before I go, I know my manners, and I believe in giving flowers in real time. So I wanted to say thank you, truly thank you, to Hudson City's School District Supportive Education, to Superintendent Pennyman, to both our administrators, district-wide and building-wide, to the staff, to our students, to our community, to our partners, to our parents and our guardians. Because again, this is about us, this is about our community, right? And so, yes, you know, together we can is the mantra, right? But I want to add to that, because we will, we absolutely will. So again, thank you for affording me your time, and I look forward to learning and growing with you.
Excuse me, just before the next presentation, could I quickly introduce the next year's student representative? Because I know she has to go soon. So next year's student rep, oh. Next year's student representative is going to be LaBona Prova. LaBona is a very smart and talented student who echoes many of the same things, but also many extra things of me. She's an avid member of Mock Trial, Triumph, Envirothon. She was one of the first members, or she was a part of the first class of Harmony Project, if you're familiar with it within our district. So yeah, she's your new student council president. Good luck, LaBona. Thank you.
Good evening, Hudson Blue Hawk family. It feels good to stand this time and not have to speak from a chair. I'm going to talk a little bit about our grant program data. I'm going to do some data walks, and our student support community team. As you know, I'm actively involved in the prior work that I did before my title change, and I do support the student support team. And I believe that Ms. Deanna Hughes did a phenomenal job, and this was her first presentation. She's hardworking and very dedicated. I enjoy collaborating with you. So table of contents, six keys to school improvement, you know, we always start with that. Grants, we're going to look at the 21st Century After School Program, My Brothers Keeper Family and Community Engagement Program, feedback, Stronger Connections Panorama School Improvement Survey. We're going to look at our students today. And Stronger Connections Restorative Practices, and the Student Support Community Team feedback. We start with the six keys, grant overview. Let's look at the 21st century. So I'm happy to report, I'm going to stay here, I'm a walker, but I can't do that yet. Our target was 100 students. That's what we said to the 21st Century Learning Center, Community Learning Centers. But I'm happy to report, we have 296 students who are registered for our after-school program, and about 254 of them attend regularly. We're very proud of that. So we surpassed our goal of 100 students. We literally had such a waiting list. Parents wanted their students to be part of our after-school program. We offer tons and tons of amazing activities. You saw the long schedule in January when I presented, so I won't be labor, but I'm proud of that. We have 254 students, 94% enrolled in at least one ELA, math, and STEM activity. And we noticed that staff members were... And we noticed that staff members, where did I get this data? Let me pause. The data comes from the Brockport Research Institute. They are our consultant, and they come in at least twice during a school year. I gave you data in January. Now I'm giving you the data since they've been here the last time. So they literally go to each one of our buildings. They observe our program. They have a very comprehensive sheet that they fill out, and that goes to the state. Staff members, they have positive relationships with our students. They love to come back. They're all over the place. We take them on trips, you saw that from January, we're still doing it. During the breaks, we had our own Carnival Cruise Celebration. Because our students could not go on a cruise during the break, we brought, brought the cruise to them. They even had the dress-up day. You know, on the cruise, when you have that, like that final night where you dress up and you have a good meal? They did that too. So we, we want them to have all kinds of experiences. And I owe that dedication to Joanne Donahue and the team. She's phenomenal, we've got a great team. So when the evaluators came, they saw all of our sites. We've got great activities going for our students. They were very, very impressed with our writing center. You know that Gail Wheeler is there, and Omar. They do an amazing job with our students. So this is what the consultant said. The program sites director, Joanne Donahue, is incredibly passionate and a well-established member of the community. Her ability to build personal relationships with students and staff is exemplary, which allows the programming to grow. I'm very proud of our after-school program. And it has been noticed by New York State Ed Department. I wanted to come back to this. This is for Matt Makar. Remember in early in the year, we talked about the after-school program handbook? It is finished. The part that we need to add are the tiered interventions and outcomes. They will be aligned with our code of conduct. And as you know, we're finishing that up. So it will be ready sometime in July. But I always, always follow up. My Brothers Keeper, just wanted to give you some feedback from our teachers involving the We See You event. You heard about it earlier, Dr. Pennyman shared. But now let's look at what the teachers feel about it. We had a wonderful, wonderful video from both of these teachers and others, but I only could choose a couple because my presentation can't be too long. "It was a very special day," Ms. Spensieri said. Teachers felt valued, they felt respected. And most importantly, they felt seen for all the things that they do here in the building. The kids from the MBK Program and Blue Hawk Academy were awesome. It was such a great day to see them smiling and happy and working hard in order to provide that awesome lunch for the teachers. It was also great to see kids who were struggling in school really take value and pride in work that they were able to give this awesome experience. So I want to say thank you to Ms. Valerie Spensieri. She is the college and career teacher. The second teacher is Maximilian Schneller, Global Nine teacher. He said it was fantastic. I think the kids did a great job. They were very organized. They were happy to be out there helping. It was a great chance to talk to the kids and talk to other teachers. It was a fun day that made me feel good. So once again, many thanks to our students, Larry Walker, Darren Collins, Molly Zucker, Shontay Brooks, Dr. Court Wright Torres, Dr. Pennyman, our superintendent, and especially the New York State Education Department MBK FSEP Division. They gave approval for this to happen. They supported it. All My Brothers Keeper, FSEP, and Blue Hawk Academy students, and especially all Hudson City School District teachers for your hard work. We see you. You are invited tomorrow, June twenty-sixth, between ten-thirty a.m. and noon to come back here to the high school library for the Launch With Confidence Money Skills for College and Life Workshop. It's very important for college students to understand how to manage finances when they get to college. Because, believe me, credit card companies, they're going to come knocking. And we need to teach our children, our young adults, the importance of not getting a ton of credit cards. It's not free money, you must pay it back, and the interest as well. So please come, and it'll be here tomorrow from ten-thirty to noon. And like, refreshments will be served. Panorama surveys, let's just take a quick look. We had two-hundred-and-fifty-nine responses from students in grades three through five. And look at the various categories and the percentages. What that means is students believe, there are rigorous expectations. Sixty-five percent of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine students believe that. Valuing of math, sixty-three percent of the students value math. Sixty-two percent value school. Fifty-six percent values, have a sense of belonging, pardon me, and fifty-one percent value ELA. Let's look at school safety with that same group of students. Again, we had two-hundred-and-fifty-nine students respond. School safety, fifty percent. Cell phone impact, forty-eight percent. They will have to get used to the new policy that's coming, but we will help them with that change, that process. Engagement, forty-four percent. School climate, forty-three percent. Let's look at students in grades six through twelve. We had two-hundred students respond. Rigorous expectations, forty-nine percent believe that there are rigorous expectations of them. Now let me say this. Out of the ninth grade through twelfth grade students, we didn't have a large number, okay? Like forty-something students. So the majority of the responses came from our junior high school population, okay? Cell phone impact, thirty, forty-five percent. Valuing of school, thirty-nine percent. Valuing of ELA, thirty-seven percent. Valuing of math, that means they value it, thirty-seven percent. Sense of belonging, twenty-eight percent. School climate, twenty-four percent. Engagement, nineteen percent. We have to take a look at these. Part of it may be due to that critical age. Junior high is a critical time in a child's life. But we also have to unpack that and really take a look, have discussions, and find out why. Stronger connections, we don't really have time. Please take a moment online, click that beautiful line there so you can see a community circle between the staff and the students and hear feedback from our students regarding that process and how it made them feel. Student Support Community Team, we're going to wrap it up with this. What I appreciate is our team has worked together for two years, and they're really terrific. We work as a family. We read all nine chapters of the Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain Book by Zaretta Hammond. They participated in monthly faculty meetings to discuss concepts, learn in our meetings. They completed two planning days. I gave them a long assignment. And here are some suggestions that they came up with. Just a few out of many. They want to do more with students. Apparently, you had a check and connect years ago. They were thinking about bringing that back with small groups of students and a team member talking to the students about issues that are important to them. We have Thomas here in our board meetings, but we're really strongly considering having a student representative come to our monthly Student Support Community Team meetings as well, because we need to have a student's voice there along with the adults. They may not be able to stay for the whole three hours, but we do need that student voice. Also, teachers want more training in culturally responsive teaching. The last chapter in the book, which is chapter nine, has a ton of information. And we are going to present that to you at a later date. And it will be very, very helpful to our teachers. Many thanks to everyone on the list. I appreciate this work. It takes a team, it takes a village. It's not me by myself. And I really appreciate all of you. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Can I ask a quick panorama question?
Sure.
Can you share out, it doesn't have to be in a presentation, but in like the Board Weeklys, the specific questions that go into that? So we can like get a little more information on like, what does it mean when kids say, you know, fifty-two percent school safety or whatever?
Yes.
And can we also get year-over-year data? So we see where, because I know we did the panorama, we saw some data from last year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amanda, that will be great. The reason why I did not put it up today is just because I only had a short period. But I will make sure you see those questions and the breakdown in each area. It's a Likert scale, sometimes, you know, you know those breakdowns. And you'll get to see it. It's color-coded and everything. And I'll give you the comparison as well. Does anyone else have any questions before I take my seat? Yes?
Will that breakdown of questions and, and answers also include the percentage of students who answered each question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, just a quick note, maybe for next year's panorama survey. I'm assuming that with the such like large amount of responses from the elementary school, I'm thinking there was, I guess, opportunity or time in class for students to fill those out and stuff. And I'm, and I'm pretty confident that that time wasn't allotted in high school classes. And that's probably why the numbers were lower. Now, I'm also recognizing that it's very hard to, for teachers to fit in that time. But I mean, if this panorama survey is influencing policy changes or in any way affecting student life, I think that there should be specific time allotted for stuff like this.
A hundred percent. And we did discuss it in our team meeting, our administrative meeting, ATM is what it's called. And we will continue to have those discussions. We really do need to allot time for students to take the survey. We cannot do this work without you. We need your voice. We need your voice, as well as all of the staff and, and the teachers and administrators. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is my last report. I've had a great time this year. It's been an honor and a joy to represent the student body. Thank you all for having this position. And thank you to the student, high school student body and the student council for electing me president. It's been quite a while since we've had our last meeting. And I haven't had an executive session with the student council to collect all of the things that have happened. But I guess most notably, I think our last, our regences are all over. Senior events have been going very well. Graduation is this Friday, very excited. We'll also have a walkthrough of all the buildings as seniors Friday morning, starting at the elementary school to the junior high, then seeing all the teachers in the high school. The baccalaureate was an hour ago, started an hour ago. And, yeah, I guess moving forward, the high school, or actually, not just high school, but, well, yes, the high school's Europe trip will be happening in July. I will be going, I'm very excited. And I hope, if possible, these things can continue. I know I'm, I'm very excited. We'll be going to Paris, Germany, Switzerland. Got our itinerary today, actually, so very excited for that. And yeah, I'm sure there's been a lot since the last board meeting, but I cannot remember it. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Thomas. Good luck at college.
Thank you.
Audit committee?
The audit committee met on June seventeenth, along with the superintendent, the executive director of business and finance, and the treasurer. We've continued our review of audit comments and the business office corrective action plans. And I can report that progress is being made. There are still some incomplete, but we're going to continue meeting and discussing them.
Thank you. Facilities?
No facilities report at this time.
Thank you. Policy?
Policy meets every time there's a board meeting. We worked today on the cell phone policy, right? In accordance with New York State law. Every school now needs a cell phone policy around no cellphone use in schools. So we began the work on that and compiled some questions. Each school, building as I understand it, has a team that's working on giving feedback on sort of the plan that works that's age-appropriate. And so we will piece all of those together once we have that feedback back from the schools. The other thing I want to note is when we, in a little bit, when we get to the first read in new business, the code of conduct that's here, there's, the policies that are listed here are the things that are required to be re-upped every year. So there's no major changes to anything there. As Dr. Pressy mentioned, the revised code of conduct is in its like finalization stage. What's here is the old code of conduct, just because we have to re-up that in the interim until the new one is ready in July. So I don't want anyone here or who saw that elsewhere to be like, wait, what happened? Why are we back to the old one? But that's where we're at, just that that has to be re-upped in the interim. And then hopefully in a month, we will have the new one there instead.
Thank you. Special board recognition.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to congratulate and thanks Wollett Jones for nine years of board service. She's been a steady and guiding presence since the day I joined the board. Always advocating fiercely for our children and our community. As many of you know, nothing happens in our schools without Wollett knowing about it. She's a constant presence in the lives of our students and does so much behind the scenes that we'll probably never know of. It's been a sincere pleasure getting to know her and her family, cheering together at football and basketball games, running into each other at just about every festival in Hudson. Would also like to thank Lakia for three years of service. First met Lakia when she came to speak at a public comment session. I knew immediately she was a voice that we needed on the board. She leads with love, family first, and fully shows up. Again, watching sports cheerleaders, celebrating homecoming queens, or lending her perspective to tough conversations. Like Wollett, I've gotten the pleasure to know her family outside of school most of the time, trying to get some food that they're serving. And I know this district is better with her presence, even if she's actually from Catskill. Thank you both for your service, your heart and your commitment. You'll both be missed. And for those of you sticking around, we will have some cake later to celebrate Wollett, Lakia, and our retirees. And now I make a motion to enter executive session at seven oh seven p.m. for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll be back as soon as possible.
Session at seven twenty one P M. All in favor?
Second.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, wait, we need to, um, we have personnel agenda.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. We'll just wait for the other two board members.
Okay.
All in favor? And on behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, uh, we are excited to congratulate the following teacher retirees. Um, Kristen Ruckey, thirty one years, thirty one point seven years. Toni Quinian, thirty one point one years. Michelle Zlomick, twenty eight point five years. Patricia Kinsey, twenty eight years. Rosalie Cornell, twenty seven point eight years. Janet Brest, twenty four years. Dr. Julia Coriel, twenty three years. Diana Howard, twenty one years. And Maureen Sheridan, sixteen point seven years. And we wish you all good health and happiness in the years ahead. Congratulations. Leslie, did anybody sign up for public comment?
Uh, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Nikki Janito.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, about to convene into public comment period. Um, uh, please note the board is here to listen. Um, the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Uh, we take your comments and questions seriously, uh, and we'll get back to you in the future. Um, under state and federal privacy laws, we're unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Each speaker gets three minutes. Thanks, Nikki.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to talk about the one meeting about, as we brought up in the last meeting. I do know that you explained a little bit about it, um, but I also know there's things that have to be approved on the personnel agendas. And I know that right now there's things that need to be approved that are not on the personnel agenda. So it seems like an issue. I feel if we go to one meeting, it's going to last forever. And there's a lot of concerns about that, so I hope that we go into it further, let the public know how that's going to work and how these things can get approved in a timely manner. I also want to talk about three minutes of public comment. Um, I, I wish you would think about extending that a little bit. Um, although you might not always like what the public has to say, you should hear us, and three minutes isn't always enough. Um, policy updates, um, I've seen that there are policy updates being done. And I'm a little concerned about that because he's not introduced to the people who do that on a daily basis. For example, the attendance policy. Um, I know for a fact that some of the people who do that have not been talked to. So this is a concern. I feel like you need very more people actually doing those policies. Um, paying stipends and consultants, um, to the public and me included. It looks like, uh, okay, if two people are working for the same job, and I will hope that the board maybe go into that a little more so people know exactly what's happening. And I had a question from the last board, or I've asked this question many times, from budget meetings where it came up. And I've asked multiple times, but still have not got an answer. And that is, um, during budget season, it said that jobs, that we give some jobs that would not be coming back because of retirements. That retirement list that you just read off, four awesome people, but it's very long. And the public wants to know which jobs are not coming back. And I've asked this multiple times, but still have not got an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Um, yeah, I hear you on the, the one, one meeting a month, and we're going to keep an eye on it. Um, see how it goes. We always have the option of doing special meetings to make sure things get approved in timely manners.
I'm here today as the H T A's second vice president, the external vice president. And I'm here today to talk about respect and input from teachers. Uh, one of the examples that I'm thinking about today has to do with the math department and how today the math administered the algebra two exam in the morning, but then were mandated to go to a professional development this afternoon. That means that students now have to wait for those tests to be corrected. They had to do a mandatory professional development instead of getting the time to do the correcting for the algebra two test. And that shows a lack of respect for the work that we do here in this district. The second example is an example of when there was respect and input from teachers, and it wasn't appreciated. So I am the social studies department chair for the seventh twelfth. And one of the things that happened was there was an idea for eighth graders to take the eleventh grade regents exam. Dr. Court Ray Torres, myself, Mr. Payne, um, Mrs. Cooper, who was the principal at the time. We all came together during the summertime. We had collaborative and productive discussion where we decided that it was a good idea to delay. And we revisit this proposal, and we did so. And that was a really good idea. That gives our eighth graders years to prepare for the regents with veteran teachers who already have taught this regents exam. And those same eighth graders then had to take a previously unreleased science regents exam this past couple of weeks. And they also had to take a previously unreleased algebra exam. So instead of them being, taking three regents exams, two of which have never been released before, because of the respect and input that we were given and the collaboration, we were able to make a decision that I'm sure for the eighth grade parents made their lives and the students' lives a lot easier. And it gives our honor students the ability to be able to take that test well prepared for that exam. My last example has to do with something that I observed. I'm not from this department. I'm not a science teacher. I'm a social studies teacher. But I'm also a New York State educational specialist for the past ten years. I'm trained to write, and I also edit, and I also do the answer queue for the regents exams and have done so for many years now. So when I saw the regents exam that was released for the science exams, I was in disbelief because of the design of the test. I know from my years of experience as a New York State educational specialist that the design for this test, not even knowing the content, was very poor. Later that same day, my students came back from the test. They were deeply upset because the content on the exam wasn't matching the framework that they had been taught. And later that evening, when I was on social media, tens of thousands of views and students and teachers all across New York State were commenting on how this had not been, the test didn't match the curriculum at all. And this was something that was very upsetting to those students. So we can see that the content didn't match the design. And this was something that when I've been a professional, I've also been afforded that respect in the past where I was asked, kind of taken to consult with both administration, my building administration, and my central administration. And I was given the time to watch that test go for a full year. You don't have to take a regents for the first time that it's administered. There's transition tests. There's transitions where you can do it the first year or the second year, and that is the case for science. So as a social studies teacher, I was afforded that respect, and I was allowed to watch that test go for a year before I had to take my students through that same exam. I wish my colleagues in science had been afforded that same respect and that same input because it was very upsetting to see that as an outside observer for both the students and for the teachers to have to go through that. Please respect our input. Please treat us as professionals. We actually do know sometimes some of the things that we talk about because we've worked with these students for decades and we've worked with these tests sometimes for decades as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Let's, please try and keep our comments to three minutes, just so everybody gets a chance to speak.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm Laura Bender. I'm a social studies teacher here at the high school. This isn't my first board meeting, um, but I am speaking in a new role as the new union president of the Hudson Teachers Association. Um, I wanted to start my statement tonight with a quote that we often hear in our profession. I've heard it in lots of professional developments attributed to Maya Angelou. People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. I need you to know that despite surface level praise for our dedication, your teachers as a whole are feeling frustrated, unheard, and disrespected. A few years ago, our district won a Nobel grant that established a team of people that looked into staff morale and retention in our district. Members involved in that process wanted me to share that they found that, what they found is still resonating now. The core issue isn't a lack of effort or caution from our staff. It's a lack of consistent communication and respect from leadership. While surface level morale boosters like coffee and cookies and monthly events are very nice, they don't really fix the bigger problems, which seem to have gotten worse. While many members have reported improvements at the building level with administrators being more present and supportive, at the district level, numerous members feel disconnected and unheard. There's a growing frustration that decisions are being made without understanding of what our jobs involve, a testament to, um, what Ms. Sullivan just said, or what we support and we need to do them well. A clear example is how our observation and evals were done this year. A large number of teachers were observed in the final weeks of school. Some were even observed on the very last day of classes in the high school. At that point, meaningful feedback really becomes just a formality, not a tool for growth. It tells us that our development isn't a priority despite being told our improvement is what's expected. In trying to advocate for our positions to be kept or to be filled as to what Ms. Janito says, uh, we have one music and one dedicated sixth grade social studies teacher I'm trying to, that I've been in discussions about. We're reminded that we need to be fiscally responsible. I'm an economics teacher, and I very, very strongly get that. I, I really do. I wholeheartedly agree. I'm just having a really hard time rectifying that statement with the fact that over three quarters of a million dollars of district spending sits on just one line of the consensus agenda tonight. We're also seeing a very troubling pattern with how staffing decisions are being communicated. Several teachers found out about transfers or new teaching assignments secondhand. In some cases, colleagues were informed of the word of mouth or this might be happening rather than a direct professional conversation. It's poor communication. It's also just a lack of basic professional courtesy. These aren't isolated incidents. They're really a larger issue. Teachers are feeling like numbers, not professionals, who have dedicated years, who have district decades really, and towards students. And almost none. I spoke to the board in October about my deep concerns about our staff retention. We've lost many veteran teachers here over the last three years. My deep worry is that this will continue. We're told to be team players. We're keep getting more. Our dedication is appreciated. But decisions aren't handled in a way that seems to be set otherwise. We're not asking for perfection. We're really just asking to be treated with the same professionalism and consideration that we as teachers extend to everybody every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
All right. So good evening again, everyone. Tonight, um, my superintendent report, I'm going to speak about, um, our early bar college where we had three seniors, um, that received twenty seven college credits for over two years. Um, as you can see, our beautiful students are right, are right there. Jacob Peterson, he earned twenty eight credits. Um, Lynn Carr earned twenty seven. And then we have Kiara Rivera that earned fourteen. I was fortunate enough to be one of the keynote speakers for that day along with one other superintendent. So it was a great affair, and it was, it's just great to see that our students have earned many college credits going into college next year. So keep that program going because that's important. And congratulations to the students and to, uh, the high school, uh, team. So we have a partnership to bring healthy meals to students this summer. And so we're really promoting this. So if families are watching, please be sure to, uh, scan the Q R code. There's lots of information that was sent out about this, and we will continue, um, to do this. And so you'll see it includes five days of breakfast, lunches, and they will, you will need, they will be picked up on forty one North Second Street every Wednesday from July ninth until August twentieth, from ten forty five until twelve fifteen. So please take advantage of that for all of our families that are here or watching. And then the high school, it was a great night. Thousands and thousands of dollars were given away to our students for the annual senior award night, and so lots of our students earned many, uh, great awards and, uh, scholarships. And last but not least, I just want to take this time to, uh, I don't have spotlight on excellence, but I'm going to just spotlight, uh, tonight. I want to thank, uh, the Board of Education for another year of employment here and for just having me. I also want to thank, um, my exec team, um, for the work that we've done this year. We've done some great work and we are making progress and gain. I'd like to also thank, um, the, uh, building leadership, our teachers, our staff, and our students, our custodians, and our families and community as a whole. We can't do it alone, and together we can. And our district is making progress in a lot of different areas that I'm very, very proud of. This year, we made national, uh, Ed Week newspaper concerning our chronic absenteeism. We also, um, were able to increase our student attendance this year. Um, that, that was great. We had that. We also continued to receive several grants that we're using and helping to offset our general funds. Um, we have, um, several teachers. We were able to bring back this year an avid program that's now all sixth graders will be able to have avid, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders this coming up year. But every, every sixth grade class will now have those great avid strategies, and that was done collectively. Last year, I put avid on hold, and then we were able to, I asked for a team to get together. We were able to get a team together, and teachers were involved, and the avid, they're all going now to the convention, uh, this, to the training this summer. And now we'll have a, a great avid program. We have now a process for A I S. We put in P L Cs this year. Um, we're going to continue the great work, and, um, we will definitely be focusing on small group instruction next year. But we'll be able to let everyone know what the priorities are for next year by the time we have, um, opening day in September. So I want to thank everyone individually and collectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, for consensus agenda, we're going to pull items, uh, K and L. Um, so make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. New business.
Uh, so this is what I mentioned before. These are just re-ups of the current policies. Um, these don't have any changes from the previous year at the moment.
Right. Yeah. So if we want to look at the attendance policy and make some changes, we would definitely welcome any, uh, input from the attendance team, um, and add it to our list of policies that we're reviewing in the upcoming year.
Um, and I'll put a plug in, which is that we did in the last meeting or the meeting before that approve a policy charter that makes the policy committee open to members of the public to sit in and be speaking voices in the policy committee in general. So, um, in July, we'll send out information. So if family members, if teachers, other staff members, school building leaders want to be a part of policy committee, um, please, please come. Um, and we'll send that out to be able to have, so that we really do want to have a working group that is, I think, you know, as has been mentioned, um, representatives consistently from different constituencies through across our community.
Yeah. The more the merrier. There's a lot of work to do. All right. So now for consensus agenda, um, we're going to pull K and L for the moment. Um, so make a motion to accept consensus agenda items, uh.
One, one more.
One more.
Uh, we're going to pull F.
Pull F, yes. So tabling F and K, uh, pulling L for a minute. So, uh, accept consensus agenda items A through E, uh, G through J, and M through U.
Second.
All in favor? And then, uh, consensus agenda item L, uh, make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six employment agreement addendums for, uh, Ms. Shante Brooks, Ms. Christie Ferry, executive director of business and finance, Dr. Elsa Court Ray Torres, uh, Dr. Tia Pressy, and Dr. Juliette Pennyman. We're tabling the, uh, transportation amendment for the moment.
Second.
All in favor? Just to public forum. Did anybody else sign up, Leslie?
No.
Um, no old business. Uh, brings us to board discussion. Anybody have anything else to add? No? Okay. Um, so make a motion at seven forty four to, uh, suspend the meeting.
Meeting dates.
Sorry. I just wanted to have some cupcakes. The following meetings are scheduled, July second, twenty twenty five, district rear meeting, high school library, six P M. July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, policy committee meeting, high school library, five P M. July twenty second, twenty twenty five, regular board of ed meeting, high school auditorium, six P M. August fifth, special ed, special board of education meeting, high school auditorium, six P M. August twelfth, twenty twenty five, policy committee meeting, high school library, five P M. August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, regular board of education meeting, high school auditorium, six P M. Um, now make a motion to suspend the meeting at seven forty five P M. Um, after, uh, after this pause for refreshments, we will be, um, entering in an executive session. So we'll be no other further business, uh, after the, we suspend the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Invite you all to join us for some cake.